We will go to our next information item, Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees and members of the community who are taking your time to join us this evening. We have shared the update on the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan multiple times per month, all the way back to last spring. This evening, we will share some highlights of the current work going on with virtual learning. We will share the state-required metrics that we're required to present in public session, and we will also share some next steps for our thinking, as our commenters have referred to this evening. A lot is happening in forthcoming over this winter break. We know that things will continue to move forward. We want to ensure that we are communicating regularly, and of course, we will need to see how things unfold as we move forward. I believe that Ms. Hosensky or Mr. Clulley have just a few slides. We won't take long with this, but I do want to begin by sharing that we absolutely do hear the concerns from our parents, from our students, the hard work of our staff and parents and community to support our students during this time. We understand that the COVID pandemic does not fall equally on families, and we're doing everything we can to support our families throughout this time. We recognize that it's not enough, and yet, we are determined to continue to leverage every resource that we have and to use every tool that we can find to reach our students and to support our students and parents and families. At the same time, as we've said for months now, we are vigorously working to be prepared when there is an opening in the data, so that we can begin with our small groups of those students who are the most impacted by virtual learning, those students who are the youngest students. That has been our plan from the beginning. We are excited to see that progress. So we'll start this evening looking at some highlights of the work that we're doing. That includes some looks at the virtual classroom. We've received, I've received criticism that the looks at the virtual classroom are trying to pretend that everything's wonderful in virtual learning. That is not the case at all, but it is my responsibility as superintendent to update on the work in progress. So that is what we're doing this evening. Certainly, we want to be back in school learning. That is our top priority beyond ensuring that our students and staff and families remain safe. So we'll be looking at a little bit from the classroom. We will be sharing the two-way communication rates. Trustees, as you are aware, NWEA reports and first-quarter grade reports and feedback from students reports will be coming a little bit later in January. So we will be looking at all of those metrics of how our students are doing as we move forward through January as well. This report is required at this time, so this is the one we're bringing this evening. We shared with you last time refinements to the school day, as well as our building preparations. We have left those sections in this presentation this evening, because sometimes folks feel we haven't given those, and so we just leave them in, so that everyone's aware that those are our most recent updates. Let's take a look, beginning with our plan update. We're continuing to wrap our supports around our students, families, and staff during this virtual time, and that includes our social workers, our intervention specialists, our counselors, our deans, our teachers, and everyone on our team working, whether that means conducting a small group for extra support, whether that means making a home visit. We're making lots of those socially-distanced supports, whether that means connecting a family to community resources. We are taking every step to mobilize support around our students who need additional support. That includes mental health support and all of those supports that we would have in place were we in an in-school environment to the greatest extent possible. We will continue, I know everyone in our community is, to work on reducing high levels of community spread, so that we can get back to in-school learning as soon as possible. We continue to maintain our buildings in a state of readiness. Trustees, you know, in last Friday's, Friday before last update, there was an update on our water testing and the mitigation that's in progress. We gave that at the last, at the last update, so you have that information. We will continue to flush that water over the winter break holiday, and our facilities team, Mr. Latzana, Mr. Rice, continue to work on that process every day. We're glad to share that all of the elementary touchless features have been completed, so that transition is complete, and work is now moving to middle and high schools. Of course, we don't need that work to be completed in order to reopen to in-school learning, but it is an extra step that we're taking to do everything we can to mitigate not only the spread of COVID, but also influenza and other infections that can move through a school. This will help in many areas. Finally, we will continue to monitor the data in the community, and I will talk more about a wider look at all of those components, not just the rate of infections that we're looking at. Our return absolutely is our shared goal. We will begin with our youngest and our students with the greatest impact. Those will be the first small groups to transition. That is the same plan that we've shared and one that we have ready as soon as we see a break in these high levels that we're experiencing now of COVID community transmission. I always need to say, when we talk about this, that we will continue to offer the virtual learning opportunity through the 2021 school year, and as the commenter mentioned on the turning of the dial, both of those pathways, once we return to a hybrid environment, both the virtual and the hybrid will be available for our students. So we always receive emails worried that when we open to in-school learning, that everyone will have to go. That is the way a lot of districts are managing it, but we have committed from the beginning to offer both paths through this entire school year. Want to touch on, one of the commenters referenced the full virtual to hybrid to fully in-person. We absolutely, that is our path, go ahead, for this year, and that is still our path for this year. Those who may be saying out in the community that a decision has been made not to open, I just want to reiterate that that is absolutely false. And again, we'll hit on the update slide in just a moment to talk about our process, once we see an opening in the data that allows us to begin that process of returning. Our virtual learning continues, our students and teachers are engaged in classes and activities and events. We will monitor and continue to add supports. We have been working diligently with students who experience specialized learning needs, not only those students who have IEPs and 504s, but also our students with second language learning and with other requirements and other needs, that we are continuing to wrap those supports around our students in a virtual environment. We are beginning that work with recovery services for our students, and that work will continue over the medium and long range, because we do understand that this impact of this COVID closure is significant, and we will be working through a recovery process that we expect will continue over the coming three years of school, and we'll talk more about it that as we move forward. But trustees, you've heard, including summer programs and continuing with many, many supports in place. During the hybrid phase of the plan, a part of that recovery includes that students with particular learning needs, higher-level learning needs, will be receiving additional face-to-face time over the general ed students. So that's a part of that catch-up, keep-up, and move-up plan coming out of this pandemic. Very good. We've reiterated our values over many updates. We leave those in here in our food distribution. You're familiar with that effort already. We'll continue over winter break, seven days a week of breakfast and lunch, and we will be communicating with parents to ensure both delivery and pickup services, so that the needs of our families are met over this upcoming winter break. Our rec and ed free PK through eighth-grade programs, this was a photo from today's play activities, and those wrapped up for prior to winter break today, but we'll be launching again once we're back from winter break. And that information, you can find it aa rec and ed online dot com. Opportunities for our students to be outdoors in a safe and socially distanced way, but to have time to play and to be together. There are also virtual opportunities there as well. You are just sharing a brief highlight on the equity work. Some folks in the community wondering how that progress is coming. We have shared this slide and this information, but we're just up A little bit of that this evening. Trustees, as you are aware, we will be providing a more comprehensive equity plan update after the first of the year, but these are highlights of the work that's in progress. We know that our work centers around five pillars. We've reviewed those systems, culture, classroom, and community. Highlights of our current work under the pillar two of leadership capacity. Trustees, you're aware, because I send you the updates, but many members of our Ann Arbor Public Schools are engaged this year in national and county level and our local level of professional development around building capacity for leadership with equity. Three of those areas include the Responsive Teaching Institute at the WISD. Three national experts, Dr. Yolanda Seeley Ruiz from Columbia, Dr. Bettina Love, and Dr. Goldie Mohammed are giving regular sessions throughout the year. I'm very grateful that we have many, many staff members, teachers, and leaders from Ann Arbor Public Schools and from school districts across the county, as well as members of my immediate team and myself involved in these sessions. They happen on a regular basis throughout this school year, and they're really about equity-based classroom practice. The second area is our national cohort of district leaders. We're working together with about 100 leaders from medium and large-sized districts across the country in a leading-with-equity group learning activity. It extends over 10 months of this school year. Our most recent session, we participate in these sessions on Saturdays each month. Our most recent session was around the Hidden Biases of Good People, and that was led by Dr. Bryant Marks. Dr. Bryant Marks, we also have heard from Dr. Pedro Nogier and Dr. Dennis Carpenter, so we will continue that work as well. We also have Ann Arbor Public Schools teams engaged in development with national equity and social, emotional learning cohorts. Ms. Jazz Parks has recently been asked to sit on a panel for one of those at the state level. She's already engaged along with other leaders on our team at the national level in that work. Highlight on pillar four, which is school and classroom practices. We have worked at every step of this Continuity of Learning Plan to keep the equity lens in place as we've implemented our Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. So providing that full Myon academic readers and the full library on the device of every child in the district, and supporting every family with connectivity, whether that looks like the district covering the Comcast, the special 999 a month charge, or whether that looks like the Jetpack or the hotspot, we continue to support. And Ms. Linden's going to share shortly just a reminder of where parents or families should call if they find themselves in need of additional connectivity support. We recently, just last week, shared the adaptable grading approach. It's very similar to universities in the area, and we are using that for middle and high school students as a way to support them and their needs during this virtual learning time. We're implementing small group supports, our teacher learning networks, our teacher team from Summer Learning last summer launched a series of lessons around anti-racism and bias work for our students, and that work continues now and is working not only through our socially-emotional learning time, but is also, our teacher learning networks are working around how to be equity-focused, right embedded in their regular classroom practice. So trustees, that is, those are just a few highlights of the ongoing work around equity in the district. There's far more that we look forward to sharing over the coming days and weeks. Move forward together. Our two-way interaction report and our spotlight on the classroom, we have Ms. Dawn Linden, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, with us this evening. We are missing Ms. Jazz Parks, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. She is trapped in an outage without connectivity right now, but will follow up with us on the recorded version and has worked with Ms. Linden and I to prepare this report this evening. She sends her regards. All right, Ms. Linden.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Johnson, trustees, and Superintendent Swift. As we have in the past few months, we'd like to share with you our stats around two-way communication, which is our state-required measure. As you recall, this is a measure of two-way interaction between teacher and student at a measure of two times a week, and the target is to be at or above 75%. So in the next slide, you'll see that the metrics, there we go. You can see that we've been sharing this metric with you each week of school, monitoring very closely, so that we ensure we maintain a 75% or above average, and you can see we're well above that target. This week, the week of 12-2 to 12-8, this past one, 94% for the district, and you can see it by level as well. So we'll keep on going, and we all know that our standards are often higher than state requirements, and that is true in our daily attendance practices. So we're also monitoring the attendance during classes each day, and in the next slide, you'll see those metrics again that we've shared the past few months with you. Each week of school, you can see that we monitor that that interaction in attendance each class period. We're averaging 88.67% attendance in this most recent week of 12-2 to 12-8, and you can see that's pretty close to where we've been. When we see drops here, we know that our school teams are busy reaching out to students to ensure that they're connecting, finding out what may be barriers that are in the way. And in the next couple of slides, these are measures and efforts that I know Ms. Jazz Parks has shared with you in the past, but we don't want to miss sharing with the community all the steps that happen, or at least a representative set of those steps that do happen. So here are just some ways that we reach out and try to enrich and support with attendance. Dr. Swift has also mentioned that social-emotional well-being is an important consideration, and it was for us in our fall design, knowing that we were going to begin the year in a virtual setting in particular. And so this continues to be a focus for us. I want to thank our SCL work group, made up of our school psychologists, social workers, counselors, and intervention specialists, who continue to create lessons for advisory courses for use in daily lessons with students, helping them to talk through issues, really getting at what may be barriers for students, helping them to build together a culture in those advisory classes, one that is supportive of them, that recognizes and welcomes them fully in all of their richness and lifts up their identities. And so this is an important way that we're trying to actualize our equity goals in our district, and we'll continue to work hard in this area. So thanks again to our SCL work group. Some good news and some metrics around our use of library is coming very soon, but we just want to remind our community that as we prepare to head out for a winter break, our amazing APS librarians just last night held a live session that they recorded, helping families to know how to access the Sora digital library system. And so we want our families to know that they can access books alongside students, how to help their students to check out books. That will be on our website at a2schools.org, right on the main page in the headline. So if any of our families over break wish they had access to some books, they can make sure they can get right online with Sora and check one out immediately. So we want to draw attention to that. Thank you. As always, in terms of family supports for families of students with IEPs, but any family who may be struggling, we want to let our families know that following the break, we will continue monthly support groups every second Tuesday and every fourth Thursday. Those times listed here. And we also want to share again with our families that there are on-demand family support resources available there at the SISS Resources website. Simple way to get there is to go to our website, a2schools.org, and in the search window, just type SISS Resources, and it'll bring you to that page and that link. But that is just a really wide area of resource and support for families, from health to behavior to mental health. You can find just about anything that you're looking for in terms of tips and tricks and supports and connections. So we'll move on. Dr. Swift mentioned we'd share an update about our connectivity. We've probably distributed 10 or 20 more devices just in the last couple of weeks that we shared data with you, trustees, and the connectivity has gone much, much higher. You'll recall, we were just getting started with Comcast Essential Sponsorship Connections, and I believe our data was in the teens when I shared it with you last. We've now connected 80 families with internet through Comcast Essential Sponsorship Connections. Want to thank Jason Kitchen, who's our contact with ITD, and of course, Dr. Heather Kelstrom, who's been leading this charge. They have been doing amazing work, and they have an additional 30 families who they're helping right now and anticipate to have connected here very shortly. So that work continues. It's ongoing. We know that need for internet is something that sometimes comes up in the event of changing life situations. So we're never done with that work, and thank you to our IT team. Here are the promised digital stats for you, trustees, and we couldn't be more happy to share this with you. So Myon is our system used by our K5. Students within the school system and the school day, they use these books in their guided reading and in their workshop times with their teachers, but they can also check books out to read. And as of the 14th, we have our students, 8,361 of them to be exact, who have read and finished 66,997 books, and they have spent 18,439 hours reading. And we look forward to keeping you updated. On the Sora side, you'll recall, we were able to launch this in early November, so we've had the system up and running for a little over a month, and in that time, 11,164 students have signed in, and 33,608 eBooks and audiobooks have been opened and accessed, and the total hours of reading at this point represent about 22,000 hours. And we're going to wrap with a couple of highlights or spotlights. The first is a highlight of PLTW. Mr. Rod Culpett, who is an amazing PLTW teacher at Huron High School, is going to demonstrate one lesson. We'll spend about 30 seconds watching this video, maybe a little less if we're short of time, Dr. Swift, but here you're going to see some real-world and relevant connections and how this teacher conveys calm positivity and passion, and most of all, clarity in some complex things that students are learning.
There we go. Okay, so the first thing, obviously, it says here, if you ever get lost, just use the presentation to help you guys. The file itself is in Teams, All On Shape, Users, and then Selfie Stick. So if we go into, the first thing I want to kind of bring open is the document itself. So I've created this document called the selfie stick assembly document, and it looks like this. Basically, what it is, is it's showing you what you originally get, and with color coordination, it allows you to show what the assembly is going to look like when you put it together, as well as the only weird, I call it weird because it's the only different kind of, you know, joint that's going to revolute in this case, right? And then it shows you an exploded
Thank you, Mr. Clulley. And second, we'll take a quick look at seventh-grade Scarlet Band. I can't resist showing to you, trustees, the amazing work of our band directors and our musical students. Director Carolyn Fitzgerald is going to demonstrate through her students' performance, her clear passion and her clear connection with students, because their work is incredible, and you're about to see 30 seconds of Dragonfire by the Scarlet Seventh Grade Band. Thank you so much. It feels like it's never enough time to really enjoy that, right? But I really appreciate you allowing us to share that with you, and I think we'll just end by letting our families know that while we are proud of all of the hard work of our teachers, we know there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of support needed. So we will not quit. We will keep connecting and working with families to ensure that we're doing everything we can. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Linden. If you will stay with us, we'll finish the report and then take the trustees' questions on the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. We'll move through the building readiness slides. Trustees, you're very familiar with these. We shared them before, recently, and go to number 37, which is our update and our recommendation. We continue to have high positivity rate We continue to have high positivity rate in Washtenaw County, Region One in Michigan. We are grateful, as you all know, to have seen some reduction, some improvement, and that's very wonderful. But we are still in Washtenaw County, in Region One and in Michigan, we are still at Level E. And I'm now dropping in the date of when I, when we check that, because when folks view this a little later, it could be different, but we are still in the highest level according to the Michigan My Safe Start designation. The additional concerns are about adequate contact tracing. When cases do arise, there, we are not at the point at, at this moment where that contact tracing can occur comprehensively because our public health supports are really strained with the current number, current level of community spread. We are also challenged by obtaining timely, readily available tests, and more than that, though, timely results of tests. And that is something that is needed in order to be confident about reopening to in-school learning. And then finally, we continue to hear from our, both our local and our state public health experts that the strain on hospital capacity, and they continue to emphasize that that is not so much necessarily the number of beds available, it is more around their ability to staff their situations, but they would continue to have that strain and anticipate that continuing through these weeks of December. So it is our recommendation to continue in our virtual learning status, to continue to monitor all of these areas and update our APS dashboard in our community as we move through this time. We will continue to implement every resource and every support that we possibly can to support our students, our staff, our families. We do understand, because we, we work with our folks every day, we understand that this current situation is a tremendous hardship on everyone involved. And yet we also know that there are promising signs coming with the coming of the vaccine. We do not know the exact timeline, but we are thrilled to see that the vaccine may come alongside this highest point of the surge. So this is the same process that we've reiterated for many weeks. Trustees, you're familiar with it, is that we will review the public health metrics. We don't just look at those things on the dashboard. We're looking at that wider scope of indicators of how we're doing. We will review those. We will update the board. We will post that on our website. We absolutely will continue to refine our approach based on what we're learning every day. It is still a constantly and rapidly changing situation, but I do want to reiterate, trustees to our community, that we will update that look at our situation as we need to. It is still early in the vaccine process, so that particular component is not exactly clear of that timeline yet. We have said from the beginning that we are not awaiting the vaccine, and we are not, but it is very interesting and very encouraging to have the vaccination emerge. The team will monitor. We will continue to keep our buildings ready. Our staff are ready. They are hardwired to be in our schools, and they want to return. We just need to see a break and an opening in this data. So we know the public health guidance, and we will continue to follow that. I know we're all working hard. I want to just pause as we wrap up this Extended Continuity of Learning Plan update. That for folks who have perhaps thought that we don't have a plan, I just want to remind folks that certainly we continue to update as we learn more, but we absolutely have a fully developed plan for return to school. That includes our COVID response plan that was presented to you, trustees, several, many weeks ago. It also includes our processes and procedures in schools. We are at the table every week with teams of our leaders across all of our employee groups. They are with us, and we continue to refine so that we are well-prepared when that opening comes in the data. Certainly, last slide is our, just our reminder, there are signs of hope emerging, and yet the COVID crisis is not over, and that is our current status. We will continue our vigorous work to support in every way that we possibly can. We will continue to remain prepared and to finalize everything that needs to be ready. And we will begin with small groups of students, those students who have the greatest impact on their learning from virtual learning, and the youngest students first. And that involves beginning that transition with young five, kinder first and second alongside preschool in that very first phase of the transition back to in-school learning. So trustees, this is our Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. We are here to receive your questions or any clarifications that you have. I want to give a big shout out and thank you to Emily Feinberg, King and Angel Mentee Teacher. Trustees, you normally at this December meeting would have a performance of a group. In, in this year, during our COVID virtual year, we're delighted to share the artwork from our art classes, and it's been posted throughout this presentation, just as a small token of, of the great work that's going on. So with that, President Johnson, we're ready for any questions or clarifications that are needed.